There's a parking deck on the first two levels of the structure and the lower one to two levels of that structure being located underground, which will result in sixty two parking spaces and seventy seven hundred and seventy square feet of retail slash cafe space on the ground level fronting South Bridge Street. As for relief and variances necessary from the area in both standards of the ECP ERB plan, we have, first we have a look through the pre-existing conditions, which is minimum lot area, twenty-four thousand square foot required, and we have twenty-three thousand four hundred and thirty-two square feet. That's pre-existing. The lot depth is also pre-existing, a hundred and eighty feet is required or a hundred and fifty-four point two seven feet is proposed and existing, and the minimum rear yard, whereas twenty-five feet is required and fifteen feet is proposed. For parking spaces, there's a hundred and seventeen off-street parking spaces required, and I believe we're at seventy-five parking spaces. Sidewalk width, eight feet is required and six point five feet is proposed. Variance for front facade window area where forty percent of the first floor facade required to contain window, and the applicant is proposing twenty-six percent, and this is due to the parking deck and the ventilation needed for the parking deck. There's also a requirement for an off-street loading space, which we don't, which we don't propose in this application. And then there's also a side yard setback with respect to height, which is a ratio, and the height exceeds the setback ratio of one foot for each foot of horizontal distance, which I'll have my architect explain. This application also necessitates three design waivers. One is for street trees, four are required and none are proposed, again, due to the site conditions and the narrowness of the, of the sidewalk there as well as the utilities brought under the front side of that structure, proposed structure. The sign light, sign lighting uniformity ratio, where a ratio of four to one is required and eighteen point two is proposed. Again, this is addressing some of the visibility concerns from the ingress and egress parking deck. And sign elimination where a maximum of point five foot handles that properly line are proposed, whereas twenty, are required, whereas twenty-nine point one are proposed. With me tonight, I have four witnesses. We have our civil engineer, George Volk, from David A. Sire's office. We have Rocco Campanella, our architect. We have Gary Kaliniak, from Dolan &amp; Dean, our traffic engineer. And closing out testimony, we have John Chadwick, who's our professional planner. We also have Sam Perkari, on behalf of the applicant, here to answer any questions that you may have of him. So I think it may be easier just as we're prepping and going through it, just maybe swear on everybody so we can kind of, there's a lot of questions that have, you know, parking and engineering input will be needed, so.
So if we just have all your witnesses standing right there? Just for the testimony about to give this board, is it a whole truth or nothing but a truth?
Yeah.
All right, and then they can just announce.
So my first witness is George Volk, and he's our professional civil engineer. Mr. Volk, could you just give a brief benefit of your?
Can you just tell your last name?
F-O-L-K.
Just give a benefit. I've presented in front of this board many times over the years, Board of Justices as well, our planning board, been a licensed engineer for over, way over thirty years now, and still have license in the state, and I've presented in many towns, in county and other towns.
I want us to briefly introduce him as our expert in the field of civil engineering, and we'd ask him to first go over the existing conditions and then move to the proposed conditions.
Well, having grown up in Somerville, you guys are aware of that. As a youth, I've always come down here to the bicycle shop, and these buildings have always been in Somerville, and I think it's time for a change, and I think what we have proposed tonight is going to be a good addition to the borough. As you may recall, Mr. O'Grady identified the four buildings directly across the parking lot from, from this police station, the formerly Litzra Lounge, and then three residential dwellings to the south. So these four buildings would be demolished, demolished, and a five-story apartment with sixty units and seventy-five spaces destructed. One, one, one level, the street level, would be parking garage, another level and a half below that, subterranean, would be parking, and then the remainder of the building height is residential apartments. Application tonight was pretty straightforward as far as engineering goes. The site was mostly impervious coverage for the most part. We're adding thirty-seven hundred square feet, a small amount of area of additional impervious coverage, and we provided an oversized pipe that ties into the borough drainage line. And those storm drains is probably not the right thing to talk about today, but we have showed calculations that show that this condition here will be de minimis impact to the borough systems. The, the site is roughly a half an acre in size total, four lots, and the impervious coverage is, like I say, just increasing by a little over three thousand square feet, so a small amount of area. Again, the parking for the facility will be underground and will access onto South Bridge Street in a location across the street from the parking lot here. I can go through the comments real quick, Mr. Cole, I think that will best get the testimony out there first.
So we mark that as?
Is that part of what we submitted?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a site plan essentially rendering another site plan, but it's a little less information of the site plan and a little bit information from sheet one, so it's a combination of everything that's in the set, but it is.
A new drawing.
It is a new drawing.
So what we have already, we have the application as day one, the notices as day two, Mike's report is as day three, we have the site plan day of July twenty-six, twenty twenty-one as a four, but we're saying that this seems a little bit different from that. So then, A five has to do with architectural plans, A six with materials, so as A seven, what I think you can do is one sheet, one is the A one bottom.
Render the site plan.
Eight. Last for five. Eight, eleven, twenty-one. And then, if you want to?
While we're here, put together.
Okay. We'll get no other boards.
Looking over to page six, I think Mike did a great job getting through page one and five. As far as items, A one, two, three, speaking about the finished height of the parking spaces for the parking, we're going to have the architect, Rocco, here to discuss that. Really don't have any questions with the one, two, or three. Item four is the testimony regarding visitor parking. We've provided seventy-five places, there's sixty units and a half space per unit for RSIS, which is thirty spaces, and we're providing fifty percent of that right now in the parking garage, fifty spaces. We feel that that's a sufficient amount. There is, you know, places, I understand in the borough that they could, they could park outside a building, if there's, if the tenants don't take up the sixty spaces, you know, we have ample room in the parking garage, and that really is, the RSIS calculation for that tends to be a little heavy, I think, for units or construction like this, where, you know, if we're, if we're, you know, thirty people or thirty extra spaces are needed for visitors, that, that, that's a lot for a sixty-unit residential apartment, in my opinion. So I think fifteen is a fair amount. We can have further discussion, we have our traffic engineer here tonight, you can expand on that if the board feels so inclined.
Can I just ask a quick question? Earlier you said there were sixty-two spots in the garage?
No, we, that's a good segue, because we had revised the plans after having certain discussions with the board and the board professionals to actually go about another half of, a half a story lower into the ground to get to a ratio of at least one point two spaces per, per unit. So initially, and perhaps Rocco, our architect, can kind of go into the evolution of this design, but originally it was not so much subterranean parking deck, but a higher, a higher building, a story higher, and that was compliant with the parking requirements, but the thoughts were based upon the elevations and the contour, that we should bring the building down a story. So then we pushed our parking garage subterranean, which, as you may know, is obviously a very great expense, and added a really, I think, fantastic architectural element that our architect can assessify to, with the addition of an amenity for a roof deck. So that was kind of the trade-off. So we, we originally had fully compliant parking, then we went to a ratio of one to one, and then after several discussions with Mike and other borough professionals, we went down another half-story underground. So we're really about a story and a half underground, and then one story above for the parking deck.
So it is?
Seventy-five spots, sixty units, seventy-five spots, handicap spot and fifteen, fifteen to get out of visitor parking spaces.
Okay. Regarding items five, six, seven, eight, nine, comply with all those. Item ten, the parking zone for this project is, we don't have one designated for the site right now. The driveway entrance and exit is twenty-four feet wide on South Bridge Street, and we're showing about a twenty-foot tapered, no parking area on either side of the driveway to the north and to the south to give the drivers current ability and sight, visibility. I understand, you know, Grubhubbs, Amazon, those kind of vehicles would park here, I would imagine, and then access the building through the front doors and then deliver the food or, or packages. The packages would be delivered in the front lobby, anything has to do with a move-in truck, like someone's moving in and moving out. My opinion is the apartments aren't that large that you're going to have a tractor-trailer there for all day. I think when we have the, you know, smaller box truck that could park on either side of the driveway, unload the material into the garage if they had to, or load it from the garage, and be in a short duration of time, so we really, really don't have a loading zone designated for the building. Our other option would be to ask Borough Council if we could grab one more parking space and designate that as a loading area, but I think with parking tight in Somerville might not go well.
We're losing four already?
We're losing three out of seven.
That, that might not be a bad idea, to designate a loading zone. And during the day, there's not a lot of parking there, it's evening, it gets bad.
Okay.
And for the rest of the year.
Yeah, I prefer that.
What's, what's the elevator situation too? Are these elevators going to be set up in terms of capacity for home furniture?
Oh, yeah.
Size-wise?
Yeah. Is it, you know, with, let's be honest, not a lot, not a lot. With Amazon and everybody, it sounds like those spots are going to be taken up on a regular basis, that you have sixty units in there, so parking right next to the entrance, where you're trying to give a buffer zone so they can sit, seems to be creating an unsafe situation for the drivers rather than a safe spot for the unloading.
If we have our traffic engineer perhaps throw us some ideas, or we're just, you know, thinking about a good solution, but perhaps a striping that would prevent regular public parking, a sign, and make perhaps white striping that would either be in a triangular shape as shown, or we've seen around town just a square of white striping so that regular people, regular vehicles couldn't park there, but then it would just be marked as a loading zone. Because the reality is, as we all think, I think are aware, that, you know, Amazon, the mail truck's going to pull right up to the front entrance where all the mail boxes are, unload right in the lobby and move away. So I guess that's perhaps a discussion for the, for the borough at another date, but we would certainly appreciate your input on the perspective and support the perspective of designating that at least one of those sides as a loading area, designated loading area.
I think it's a good idea. We're going to have problems here no matter what, and what will happen is there'll be some car parked there, so hands-on truck parked in the street.
Or block entrance to the parking deck.
And then let's, let's remember, if all goes well, within our lifetime, maybe five years, there'll be something across the street from this, and we'll be facing that.
He said that not twenty years ago.
I keep with the detail, but I'm cautiously optimistic. So I think to set this up now, anticipating a lot of demand and a lot of activity on both sides, it's better to build.
Right. So you will request a?
Yeah, we'll request, we're going to send some fully engineered conceptual plans to everyone, and then we'll make that presentation.
Good. Okay, where do we move off on Mike's?
Yeah, well, we're up with number eleven on page seven, and I think we answered one of the questions. Elevators, we have an architect here, if there's any more questions. I think item twelve to thirteen, we just, well, well, anyways, that stuff tells us what we just were talking about. Thirteen, what we're proposing to do is put some kind of audio or audible and visual sign that says car or, you know, something that's more industrious, that someone's coming out.
What about mirrors?
I'm not sure that they would, where they could work, I, 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 we'll look into that, but.
Just, just a thought.
Okay. Stormwater, item B, I will work with your board engineer a hundred percent through everything. Item four on that, the runoff from the metal canopy, I understand your concern, Mike, a hundred percent. I think, you know, there's going to be water, whether that, that water was hitting the building and hitting the sidewalk, or now it's going to hit the line and hit the sidewalk. He intends to have full-time management staff cleaning sidewalks, so I, I understand the concern for ice, and at this time, we don't propose any roof leaders connected to the, the storm, the drain, the gutters, and, you know, the snow elimination and ice and all that will be addressed on a daily basis, you know, I'm sure he doesn't want any lawsuits any time, because that's looking to fall, so that's how we were looking to address that question at this time, unless you could really know it.
Well, the issue is we've had Starbucks, we've had icing and sidewalk from the canopy, so that comment is something I learned a decade ago, because.
Well, we've had these canopies that project more, most of them project a little further, and then we've had the drifting and the icing on the sidewalk, it's a lot of traffic, so on all the future applications, I'm trying to get it internally, so you don't, I get you, but my only discussion further with that is I've reached Starbucks is on the south side of Main Street.
Yeah.
And that, that side is always cold, all winter, doesn't see the sun or anything. We have that, we get that the face of our building will be, you know, in the sun.
I understand, I'm just saying that we add, it's a problem, but you wouldn't think it's a problem, but if you have a bad winter, it's a problem.
Got you.
If, if we could work with Rocco, Rocco, we could.
Yep.
I understand where he is in this, but I would, you know, perfect world, tie it in, so we don't have that future, I understand what you're saying, but every time we do this, we have a terrible winter, and it comes back. Every time I say it's never going to happen, it's absolutely going to happen.
Absolutely.
It's also a narrow sidewalk.
Yes.
Narrow, yeah. And glad you brought that up, that's one of the reasons for the variances, is that it's existing six and a half feet wide right now today, and that's because of the property line that potentially recur, so we're just mimicking the construction that's out there. So if we give you aid, we would give you the aid required, and we'll.
Well, you could.
Well, that would be another variance, if you're.
No, I mean, that if you didn't make the building big and started the building back at the, it's supposed to be, then that would be the building's problem.
That's another, that's another variance.
Well, but that was to make it climb, to make it better for the sidewalk.
Item C, I'm doing all, all comments, I'll work with Mike. Landscaping, it's, it's.
Go back to the, on the, on the main sheet that showed all of the variances you talked about, very high.
Yeah.
Is that addressed in the site lighting? Like, why is it so bright?
Well, the reason for that, sir, is that that's over the property line, because the building's up to the property line, and the lights that we have for the entrance are bright, so, you know, safety, and Mr. Cole is pointing that out. It's bright, but it's a public slatter, so it should be bright, and it's a driveway too, plus there's some comments that it could be dimful, so I, I'm not really concerned because they're all dimful, we can go in the field if it's too bright, you can dim everything down, yeah, so I think that will solve. It seems bright on acre, but it's in front of the building, and he's at sidewalk, so it's showing cars coming out, you need a lot of light, in my opinion, you need a light there. It's a slight trespass towards the north, the one-story building is now, it's only slight, there's no trespass on the, on the south, it's right, east, right, George, so we're talking, that lighting is typically right on the sidewalk over Bridge Street, South Bridge. And, 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 sir, along with that is the, the issue with the uniformity ratio, because it's such a weird area, you know, typically you have a big parking lot, you can place your lights and get the uniformity ratio, so, you know, it doesn't have bright spots and dark spots, because it's just an odd shape and stronger lights, it throws the uniformity ratio way out of whack. Okay, over to landscaping. It's a, it's a tough site because there's not much left, but item two, the applicant is willing to provide a donation, or if you'd like to see the, the street trees planted along the south side of the building in that area, we put four trees there, or we could give you the contribution and you can put the four trees somewhere where they got destroyed this past week.
I would imagine that there should be some sort of additional landscaping on the south side of the building, anyway, regardless of the form of front, the form of front, that's right, Jack, the environment protection, the plant trees, where we do, but you don't have any kind of landscaping, what from the south side of the building?
No, we have fence, we have a six-foot-high fence, white vinyl fence around the, the east and the south, and we have a sidewalk in there, in an area where people would sit on a bench and walk their little dog in the grass area.
From the east, from the eastern side of the building, there's trees there, but nothing on the south side.
You show trees, you show trees on the drawings, are they existing or?
Those are existing, yes.
I was going to say, they won't last through the.
Yeah, they're, they're right on the line, they're down the property line anyway, they're on the.
Where's the building line, sorry?
What's the width of that dress area at the time, between the building and the population?
Sixteen feet. Four, three, I guess, is the sidewalk.
I would think you'd want, if you're going to have that as an additional amenity, you might want to put a shade tree through.
Sure.
Otherwise, they won't be, especially if it's the south side, a couple of seat chairs.
Well, what we're looking at right now, there's a ten-foot grass strip, and then there's a three-foot sidewalk, and then there's three feet, then the fence.
That enough room for plants on there?
There's three feet, the ten-foot G is more appropriate, but it's up against the door.
Yes, I mean, it would be, it would be ornamental, not.
Right, unless you move the sidewalk closer to the building, it's a privacy issue, it's a three-foot, but.
Yeah, well, privacy for parking lot.
Yeah, it's a parking deck there, right?
Oh, right, right.
So you could flip it and you could make it so that you have more.
Because that's the whole, that whole side here is a park, on the first level, right? First level's home garage.
Yes.
So you can put the sidewalk tighter, tighter to the building, and give it more grass, give it a fence, for a plan, for a more appropriate plan.
We have no problem conditioning that, if we work with Mike and have an appropriate.
They could go to three or four foot, three or six feet there, so it'd be a nine-foot area of fine trees next to the fence, that'd be more appropriate.
And the trees would be in a position to provide shade.
Right.
Two inches. They should be more ornamental.
And the south side, then a big giant oak tree.
Okay, item E, concrete vapor, comply with that. F, I will leave to our architect. G, which is solid waste, most of, let's see, item one, architect will, will address that. Item two will address that, item three, who will address that. Item four, he can address that, but I can, I can add that, you know, what we're, what we're proposing here is where the car, the private cars for recycling and, and refuge will be picked up by a private company and will be brought out to the street to their truck, that's, that's.
Where are you going to store it?
We have a little room, we have.
So you're going to, and how often does it pick up, on speed?
That, that will be determined as it gets moved, so.
So there's conceivably garbage cans out there every morning for it to be picked up?
No, no, they, they would bring it out to the truck when the truck arrived, so the garbage won't sit outside.
Okay.
It's inside, it's internal in the building. Architect Rocco, he can show you exactly where, his store, and then, you know, competitive is a once a week, twice a week pickup. At that time, the applicant has maintenance people that will bring the material out into the, into the truck. George, for a second, just so everybody knows, because the borough's changed trash haulers that might be a burden on, on the applicant, the borough might not be able to pick up trash at all, basements, configuration. That was the direction I was going to make sure you were aware of that, that the trash recyclables might be a responsibility on the applicant.
Right, and as we know, the county is getting very restrictive in their requirements for recycling, you know, because they're losing money on it, so we're going to have private home for recycling.
Okay, that addresses item number five on page fourteen. Item, item H, Santa Fe Reservoirs, I will work with Mike to address all those. I, my comments, we have Mr. Chadwick here to discuss. Okay, we have Doug Kaliniak to discuss that, the traffic expert, and Al, general comments. Item one, Mike, we're going to, we're going to work with utility company, again, that's something that we're going to have to address, and just so everybody knows, the utility poles, I mean, you know, side of the street, that's going to get council approval to do that, just so you know that, you're going to have to get council approval to move the poles around. Yeah, for, if you can do an Al, keep the poles, do an Al shaped over, I think that would work, but ideally it should be the ground, but it'd be down on that road many a time, and whatever happens, happens, I'm just saying, yep, please have some leeway and report grant approval, because this item is an item that takes a long time to sort out.
Correct.
Yep.
Right.
Has this been looked at by the fire?
Yes, we actually just got a letter today.
And they're happy with access to the whole building, the rainmill, the. And they're happy with access to the whole building, the rainmill, they're happy with it.
They reserve it.
There is a, there is a, my understanding is a designated marked fire lane that's
Yeah, I think my comment's here is that the alley towards the north is part of the fire lane, and goes back, and I've looked at some of the reported easements, and I don't think it includes the borough in the easements, and like I would for you, I'm just saying, if that's a fire lane, the borough needs to be
All my easements, they, they have easements, they're like a full fire truck. Right, so we own just a sliver of that easement, we'll work, like, with whatever you guys wanna do. Oak, Somerville's coming in soon, that's gonna have the other side of it, so hopefully we can maybe firm up
It's the same comment, item two, I, I, that easement is so vague, it was written in nineteen, what, thirties?
I think it was before that.
Twenties, I mean, read it, it's very confusing, I'm just saying, hit the borough in that, so
Yeah, I'm surprised that they didn't grant an easement when the fire lane was stripped.
What about this, this south side, though? More my concern, access to the south side of the building. They haven't really dealt with it right now.
So before, before we do that, let's just mark as A eight, this would be the, the letter of September seventh, twenty twenty-one, from Mark Smith. And just so the record is clear, there is a comment, and there is, there's other comments will follow, once some of the fire department has the chance to review the plan. So there's some commentary about the NFDA thirteen system, some other comments, you know, basically saying they've been a little busy since last Wednesday, but they will have to
So, and, and the applicant will comply with the, it's a sprinkler building. So that's gonna hopefully address many of the fire concerns, but we're certainly willing to build it up to whatever standard that
Okay. Okay, item two, the pad, transfor, transfor pad, I'll show, I'll get, I have a spot for that, it's outside. Item three, Michael Ward, review on emergency action plan, okay, that's common to a common for that.
Yeah. Yeah, I've spoken with Mike about that, we'll get a pro.
It is, if there is a backup generator.
Yeah. The plan just shows what's gonna be powered, what's not gonna be powered, when you management eat, you know, all of those things, charging stations, common lighting.
Common, maybe, they were, yeah, one common room, that would be the emergency room.
Right.
I mean, the intent is the, the guy can sustain the buildings.
I gave Mike all the directions anyhow, so he knows, he knows what we're looking for.
Yeah.
And, and we just lived through an example of what happens. Hundreds of people displaced in town, and it's hard to find a place for them to go, so we're trying to get it so that all of the new buildings can house the old people.
Item four, we discussed that those will be sprinklers. Item five, I will give that, you know
I had to work, yeah, demolition.
Create eyes, yeah. Make sure we have it laid out, because most you know here, take a little puff of paint, it's a space. Item six, we discuss. Item seven, we'll comply with, eight, comply with. Item nine, Rocco, we'll discuss. Item ten, I'd like to bring that attention to everyone on board. Get a chance to do that. Okay, item eleven, Mike, we talked about that, we're gonna address that. And, and then twelve, Rocco, we'll discuss the building. And the rest of this, the letters that just told by, I'll comply with.
Quick question regarding parking, Mike's letter talks about required spaces of one-twenty, and I think the testimony or the interest is one-seventeen, is it one-seventeen or one-twenty?
Well, the difference is, is a retail space of seven hundred and seventy square feet. On the base plan, it's not limited to E two and E one, P O R, so there is a parking requirement for that. So that's why I listed as a parking requirement for that seven hundred and seventy, it was E one, it would be a parking requirement, but it's not limited to P O R on the base, so that's why I listed for D.
Okay, so at these states, we should probably say it's one-seventeen for residential, three for retail, so it's required of one-twenty if it puts an
Correct.
And I gave, down to a one-point-two ratio, put two spaces in the garage for the retail, that's how I came up with that.
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna figure out if it's gonna be designated as parking or shared parking, I think that's an operational issue. And because perhaps not everybody will have, will need a space, we'll free up some for the parking.
Mike, are current regulations for parking, size of the forms is one-point-six, I understand we use one-point-two in certain developmental areas where, you know, having capacity for, for, you know, we, we have the ability to do that. This area is good, it's, it's right now, parking is really challenging. This, we've developed this building, which could be fairly close, is gonna add to that. So why if we calculate the testing at one-seventeen to one-twenty, is that what the one-point-six is for?
I showed the one-twenty is the
One-point-six.
That is at the one-point-six.
Right, okay, I'm glad you cleared that up, because I mentioned one-point-two someplace here. It's in the report that in the past, when we had gone down, the building down to one-point-two, the issue in this building is when you have a parking garage that's not accessible to visitors, it becomes a question, which George was talking about earlier, where do the visitors park? Assuming, this is assume that if everybody's out there parking, you're a party, you're a guest, or where are they parking? And that's what George's reading, for the RSI, I said, it's point-five per unit, so there's thirty spaces that have to be accounted for. And George is saying that he thinks that there's a little excesses, so he thinks seventeen, but where, where are those fifteen or twenty?
So the one-twenty includes the visitor space, that one-twenty number includes visitor spaces.
Right.
Which he, which is thirty.
Right, I'm saying, you look at the RSI, it's a total thing, it's one-twenty, but of that
So ninety is what they need for the apartment. I'm taking that one-twenty number, and taking thirty away, that's ninety, right, or eighty-seven if we include the retail. Right?
One and a half, yeah.
So they still don't meet the requirement for the units?
That's what I'm saying.
The apartment variance, for the brackets and the doorwork, and for the RSI, it's in the apartment.
Right, both for the, for the, we can have the visitors, both for the visitors and the apartment.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
I got, that's
Right.
For both, not just for visitors.
I, I just point out that of that, the RSI, as of that one-point-six, one-point-eight, point-five of it is to break visitor performance.
Okay.
That's how they break it down.
You keep talking about visitors, like everything else is met, but it's not.
No.
That's what I was trying to say.
Is RSI, is
Right, the distinction is of that unit, one-point-six, one-point-eight, point-five of it is for visitor parking. So I'm just pointing out that if you have sixty units, technically, you're supposed to have thirty for visitors. And this building can accommodate visitors, it's a collateral problem, they don't want their visitors in the deck. So the deck is typically going to be for the residents, and maybe for some of the retail employees or something.
But the deck as it stands does not even need that required, that's what I'm saying.
No, it needs a one-point-two ratio.
Right. So the deck as it stands does not even meet the requirement for the apartment's rent.
That's correct. That's correct. Well, it's one-twenty versus seventy-five.
Forty-five spaces. And that assumes that each tenant has just one car, because one car is gonna be allotted to each tenant, if you have a second car, you just don't rent there, right? I think that's where the one-point-five, I think that's where the number comes from. Real quick, while, while we're on it, the, your very beautiful-looking rooftop, sitting area, I don't know what we're calling it. Is, is the intention for that to have events up there?
No, it's just an amenity.
Just an amenity, so
It's gonna be private.
If I live in there, I can't have a, I don't know, a fortieth birthday party up there and, you know, invite fifty, you know, forty guests up there.
I mean, I think that it's gonna be available, you know, but we're not certainly, it's not gonna be a commercial rental space. So, yeah, if you have your friends over, certainly, they would, they would invite, they'd be invitees of that, of that area.
I had a
Okay, yeah, that, that goes up, if we're gonna give any kind of variance on parking, we're taking parking away from the street already for this. Not meeting the parking requirements, as, you know, stated, I forget which one of you said it earlier, parking is already tight in Somerville, so we know that that's an issue. So I'm just worried about the uses of it, if we're gonna be allowing guests to say, hey, I'm gonna have events up here, that's forty more people coming into town. I don't know where they're supposed to be parking when there's not even guests parking.
Yeah, and we have no problem, you know, agreeing to some reasonable, you know, limitation on that. It's really meant to be an amenity, that the guests, that the residents can use, it's not designed to be some party space. So we have no particular concern about, you know, the owner's not gonna want parties, that they have to deal with on the common space either, but certainly
And they have to treat it as a clubhouse with reservations, you know.
Right.
You wanna have a party, and I wanna have a party, and you have to, you have to work on the calendar. Still doesn't help the party. Just because you're concerned, it doesn't help the party. They say the problem, it'll be dead. True.
But again, you know, the original design, they actually planned parking, and the scale of the building was, seemed to be less there was a stronger desire to bring the, the height of the building down. Now, remember, we're way under the maximum height in the overlay district here, so we were compliant with that other level of parking deck. But for aesthetics and for other architectural considerations, a floor was dropped, we're going down into the earth for the parking deck. And then we added that amenity on roof, because it was an architectural
Well, you put another floor of parking, you'd still be way over parking.
There'll be another floor of, of the deck.
Like, you'd that still.
Okay, any other questions?
Is that, is that a possibility?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's always a possibility, but, you know, the thinking was bring the scale down after consulting with, you know, the borough. You know, again, that was the original design, so it's kind of a compromise on not going to the maximum permitted height in the zone, bringing it down. And, you know, again, it's a, it's a big cost issue to go subterranean parking deck, it's a substantial build. And this isn't your typical apartment building, it's a square, it's really, it has quite an alarming amount, if you're, if you're the person vying for architectural features, that we, you know, will be an attractive solution. But that's where we arrived, we have, we have originally only had sixty parking spaces with a one-to-one ratio. And then over the last several months, we've redesigned the deck again to go deeper, so now we're going down another half-story to get that additional, let's call it, visitor parking.
That's not visitor parking, it's not visitor parking, it is parking, it's just parking regulation. Okay, and it's not about the visitors, it's about not meeting even the number of apartments you have and the requirements for that. I think that's our concern, more than visitor parking, it doesn't need the number of apartments.
Correct.
So, in this, so, I'm just trying to follow up, so, the building, as it was originally done, appropriate parking, the parking that meets the standards. It was conforming to the type of
They correspond with parking standards when you added one-story area?
No, it didn't.
How short?
How close were you? It was more than one.
It was still one to one.
It's still, they, yeah. Now, now we got one-four-two. So we were, so we didn't bring it down to lose parking? We brought it down because they, they're putting in a second underground Okay, so it went in the right direction for parking. So they're still, they're still gonna have seventy-five spaces for sixty. They have sixty, okay, gotcha, all right, I was, I was in traffic, okay, then, my second question, why are the mechanicals on the front of the wall HVAC rather than the back?
Rocco will He'll be, he'll be sure.
All right, thank you.
So I'd like to have us have a little discussion about the height of this building. The way our current, my understanding is that this building has to, has to all of our overall variance to become a five-story structure. So this board needs to consider whether we must put a five-story structure in this area. Now, adjacent structures are one-story and the bank is two-story.
That, that adjacent structure is gonna go away.
Right, and that's gonna become a two- or three-story structure.
Three-story.
So, so the maximum of this structure, even if that existed, would be worse. Because he calls for one-story.
And, and this, Mike, you wanna explain this?
Yes.
In, in the overlay zone, we originally, when we did the, we, we sung that for hotel.
Yeah.
And we had a higher height level, higher maximum, because based on the size of the block, we were assuming that a hotel could come in. But we wanted to get another liquor license, and we didn't. So that's why that height requirement was right there.
Yeah, it's six stories, ninety, what the chairman said, but you need twenty-four thousand, there are twenty-three thousand to change.
Right, that's where the variance will allow us to move forward.
Right.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure the board, that we have to grant this overall variance if we decide to go up to this level of height in this area.
Because you were saying that the minimum block for the five stories, twenty-four thousand, and they don't have
They don't have that.
You'd be asking for a relief to apply the overlay to, to allow that, a relief of seven hundred square feet, I say seven fifty, wherever it is.
But we're creating, by allowing that and granting that variance, then we're creating the need for variance for parking, I think we're kind of building all these variances up, the height variance.
So we're not granting a height variance, we're granting variance from the minimal block size, have that height, right?
By doing so, we're allowing a bigger, bigger building, and the parking numbers go up, but they don't have the parking numbers, so it's counter, it's counterintuitive to move forward with that.
On paper, it looks like less than the number of variances that you apply the other standards, which require more potentially than the mean.
Karen, the original plan was a hotel, and what the chairman said, case of liquor license and enough room.
Right, but this isn't a hotel.
No, I'm just saying, that, that's why you hit that corner at six stories, at ninety feet, was to be able to, a hotel to get a liquor license.
But if I remember correctly, we thought somebody would make a much bigger chunk of that block than these four buildings.
He thought it was looking the corner all the way down.
Exactly, so I think, you know, in that, way back when we did that, we really thought that that whole piece was going to be, and that's a difference.
Yeah, Karen, I just gotta remember, or the piece, that overlay, the redevelopment class, relates me, it was drafted in ninety, we enacted in ninety I guess ninety, oh-six or oh-seven, we resurrected it, but that original plan was, was out there, it's ninety-seven, ninety-nine. Yeah, it's been around, I think it's one of the oldest redeveloped plans around. Yeah, it's, it's updated, yeah. Yeah, oh-eight or oh-seven, right, it was updated three times, but that, that vision is, is a vision going back twenty, thirty years.
Okay. Someone, if you have any other questions for civil engineer, I'd like to introduce Rocco Caminella, architecture plus, our architect. Mr. Caminella, if you could provide some of your professional experience in licensing for the board.
Sure, I'm from the garage of the, of the architecture, I'm in the north, twenty-eighty, I've been practicing with design firms since nineteen eighty-six, I've been, or perhaps since nineteen ninety-seven, I'm a resident of Bridgeport. I'm a resident of Great Harbor. That's the fight in Somerset, I'm a licensed architect here at the New York. I have these black conditions, I'm currently, I'm a residential contractor. We provide work at, we were commissioned for this project with just about three business.
So just for some housekeeping, I believe all these have been submitted.
Including this one, there's no changes to this room?
These are the six elevations that we filed. And four, what we call composite roof use, you know, some timber that you might achieve all that, is what we're filing.
Okay, so we've got is eight-five, that's a four-year plan, dated July thirty, point twenty-one. This is gonna be your plan, this is eight-seven.
One, could you explain your vision for this project for the board?
It's still a nice theme, I think. It's not just our vision, but the opportunity to move locally. We took a very hard look at what Somerset was like, at some of the recent projects. And we feel that this is a good product of bringing together all of those visions really. To us, it speaks Somerset well in terms of the architecture, the design, the materials we selected, and the composition, the general composition. It has a strong base, it has an interesting upper upper tiers, and it's a very, another coreness one, which will be a factor. Dress up as you'll be from the base to the roof part. The ground floor is the animal one parking here. It's right in the parking, you know, there as well. It's a small retail space in the back. And the entrance to the apartments is also just selected. The apartments all feature very large windows and, you know, frustration inside the board, the balconies. Wherever we put them, you know, with the pandemic and the movement, people are really wanting to try to be more outside, you know, the hall. So we try to build a little bit of space. And we thought that's ultimately the best choice for that. Just about the power loop is a place to, has an ability for mechanics in the world. The, to the right side of the building is set back twice by about five feet, you know, sixteen foot. Up to its line, it's set back, and that provides the trellises on all four floors. And they're comfortable, and you have a great view of the valley. That was one of the reasons why we put it quicker in front and back, to answer the question, because the best view is really looking to Somerset Valley. And we wanted to put buildings in a place where we can do this, and not too far from all of this. So that we can take up the center, it's very important. We thought that would be a better space so that people can look north and south. One of the amenities within the outer space is that we have glass railings on those two sides. So you're sitting, you can look through rail into the views, north and south. And they also gave us good locations for the condo, but we're not too far in the north and west.
So just to clarify, the iron, black iron railings that are on the rendering from empty glass?
No, those railings are the black iron rails. The railing I'm referring to is the railings that are approved.
Perspective C or D, you want to say?
Oh, I have regulations with that as well, as a legal requirement. So we have, because maybe I should just go through all of that.
Yes, because Mark, they do all starts. That's eight-nine, and then just identify eight-ten or whatever.
So eight-nine is the front room, you're saying. We're sitting about slightly right up the building, and you can see the terraces on the right. We chose to do three basic brick colors to make the building, break the building down to be some interest at all levels. And the materials have been reviewed with your architectural review board. We submitted that information, and it was received very well, rather well, and we were happy about that. So it's a combination of three, three different brick colors. Cast stone, accents, that's what all the horizontal lines in the surrounds that you see around the windows and the opens. The lower level is just glazing and the entrance to the garage and the mechanical ventilation system. We tried to make this as close to a residential, rather a retail look as we could, give it a strong base. And we'll actually try to eliminate as much of that as we can. It'll be a function of what the mechanical system will require for ventilation. But regardless, we kept the architecture so that it had the same rhythm as you would expect from a retail space at that level. View B, which will be eight-eight. We're looking at the building now from the left side. And you can see the effect of the cornices and how they wrap around. And we really wanted the building to look good on all sides. So the same as yours is brought around, as you will see, on all sides of the building. C is more of an aerial view of the side, right side.
And not that you can get beat to hell up.
Okay. And here you can see, you'll see the glass rail on top, balconies and the terraces. And you'll see a whole space rail on the right side over there. We extended some of the power itself, that helps clean over the condo quicker. And you'll see also that there is a vertical elevator connection to the rooftop. Park as a room. As people around the building.
It's gonna be eight-twelve, yeah, eight-twelve.
I'm sorry?
Eight-twelve. Do you?
We're starting around the building, you can see the whole right side with the balconies. The building is in shade, so it might look a little dark, but we try to also depict it as the sun would hit it midday. Again, the materials are brought around all four sides of the building. Again, you see a little bit of the glass rails, the trellises, and the screens that are up there. We also provided solid screens between the sitting area and the condo, so people can look at those.
Can you just put that back up for a second? Because I think it's, can you explain, like, the side yard set back variance as well? Or so there, yeah. There's stepping back, right?
The idea was that you transition from the P O R, the old building.
Right.
So it wouldn't be like a wall of this.
Right.
So the original plan basically says one for one, but that plan doesn't do one for one. It's higher, it says back, but it didn't really, because it's higher than the plan says. You shouldn't get this.
So it should be a steeper angle line? I'm trying to figure out what's wrong. Steps back, does it step back to where, at a distance or...
If you're ten feet off the parking line, you can be ten feet high. If you're four feet, you're four feet down.
And so they're sixteen feet.
They don't need that, ten, they're showing step backs, but the step backs don't comply. They're still higher than what the step back requirement is. So ask them for relief.
How much higher?
So that's what I'm saying, like, it should be sixteen, ten feet, it'd be...
Sixteen feet high.
If you're sixteen feet away, you're sixteen feet high. What are you, you're way twenty feet high?
So what's that?
What height, are we looking at the final height, or are we looking at the first setback height? That's what we're trying to get at.
Well, it's on the plans. Rocko, you have the L T R. Mine, is it on height, right?
Like, are we measuring that sixteen feet and not...
Case level?
Is that the first setback they have to go?
Each level you can look at. So the building, you can go scale in twenty feet and just go up on the building and see how high it is.
Of course, okay, so like, if we're going in sixteen feet, the first setback should be sixteen feet high, then they can go back and go a little bit higher.
Right, how much do you guys go back?
Well, it depends on that height right there, that first height of the first setback, right?
Yeah, the first balcony is at about sixteen, ten.
So it's ten inches above what it should be?
We're sixteen-four, so it's, it would be sixteen.
So you're very close, is what you're saying.
Yeah, but others don't.
But the other ones, as you're stepping back, you should have gone, they should go further into the building.
So what we're trying to say is that we're trying to meet the intent of the requirement. We do want to step back, we think that's a nice feature. Going much more than what we do, we have, and we added that, that way we looked at the size of the units to go down. And we just not need the unit size. So it's going back five feet, and then we'll straight up, we just go into the back another five feet. We think it still looks great in terms of that setback. And it's a zone change, really the difference from there. And I think it has to be at the terrace if you want, and give you the intent of that setback requirement at that right side.
So at the final step, because you're going two balconies, so you're stepping back ten feet from the original placement?
Right.
So what's the total height of the, so it should be...
So they should only be able to go back sixteen plus?
Ten, so twenty-six feet. And then we're ending at?
Five stories, whatever that wants.
Seventeen, sixteen.
So it's about a third of what they should be doing.
Yes, I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to, like, grasp that whole thing.
All the dimensions are shown, I'll draw me two hundred on the left side. And you can see that all heights are before, but you're right, if you go to the left floor, you're back twenty-six feet. View E is again around the back. And we started to see a little bit of the left side of the building as it wraps around, stairwell, the tower. You see a little bit more of what we're doing on the terrace on top and that seating area.
You're walking sidewalk from the back, from this perspective. The sidewalk doesn't go anywhere, it stops there, because that's part of the lot.
That's the under our property. So we ran the sidewalk all the way across the right side and all the way across the back. So that we put a couple of benches there, some of the walk. It has a little bit of grass, a little bit of landscaping, some of the trees are existing there. And we thought that would be a great place to just put some green space.
Sidewalk and parking lot, and then a fence?
It does, the fence and the parking lot, there's a little bit of cake there, so that in case of emergency.
And you can't walk around from one side.
No, you really, you really cannot get into the building from this side.
And there's also no reason to, because there's no entrance there.
No.
It's a choir, it's an alley, it's a park.
That's correct, so our exits are here and around the building, from the towards the front, and after the front.
So the, should the black openings on the ground floor in the background, just ventilation, kind of opening for the parking deck?
Yeah, let me show you what that looks like. I think that was, this rendering actually is better. You show that? As you go around the back. You know, we did some preliminary studies, we didn't do the actual hard calculations, but we approximated how much we needed to. So we have the combination of dark brick and darker brick.
Okay.
So what we decided to do with the darker brick was is to put those openings in those areas. So we're blending the darker brick. And that's what you see here are the three, we are in ventilation.
Ventilation openers.
So we have cross ventilation from the front to the back. And this is where a mechanical room is also, and it was a convenient place to put it there. And it gives us that cross ventilation.
Right, so on the back side, you have openings also, that's your cross ventilation that you're talking about.
Yeah, I mean, technically it's defined as a closed garage, and there's a service open. There is required to do mechanical ventilation from four to seven. And I do believe you have to put that in, where it's a backup plant, that ventilation has to work.
Yeah, because it doesn't have openings to deal with.
Flow through, yep, gotcha.
So you're stuck with a lot of louvers and mechanical ventilation.
Yeah, flow through. And these are architectural louvers, they're not cheap, they're nice, they're attractive. They'll be the same out of the ice finish as the rings and the glass. This is a top view of the terrace looking from the south, looking north. And you can see where the mechanical ground is left and right, which is east and west. And the glass rails are there, so they can allow that view, and you'll see all the balconies. And what we decided to do is essentially create a kind of courtyard with a trellis, so that you can sit in the middle and you can sit around. And it's just open seating space and it's an amenity for tenants. One of the things that the members of the panel were concerned about, maybe one, was also making sure that we see how the size and the scale of the structure look in relationship to what is there, which I think is critically important, because even though we were allowed to go much higher, we decided to roll a margin. Nonetheless, we wanted to make sure, wanted to see for ourselves, and I think this was a good suggestion, so we have the four basic views, and you see this in the intersection of Main and North Bridge. The project you see blocked out here in this little, the corner landlord is planning on doing something. And we collaborated to get a sense of, we've not gotten into the detail, because it's still in the middle of design, gotta get a sense of what the structure would look like. And we took a photograph looking down the street and added his building and ours. To give you guys a sense of what the street looks like, this is literally sitting across the street at the intersection on this side of the street and looking kind of south, southwest, southeast. The other point that was important was right across from the courthouse and what it would look like from the green, looking that way, you can see, you can barely see a building with the structures that are there now, the most structures. We took the same view from Long Street, and this is what it would look like from the backside. Again, this is a street view, high level. And last thing, we went all the way down to the, to the next intersection on the opposite side of Main and North Bridge. And the property, the street literally goes down, and the property is kind of sitting up there. So this gives you a view of that south, the south balconies and the trellis and the rest of the architecture facing the North Bridge. I think this was a good exercise, and it was a good sense that the scale is right. The architecture, the scale, you know, felt right for this. And you have, you have these as well as the other regulations. So generally, we have about fifteen units per floor, still floors. Ground floor is a little bit of a detail. First level of the parking, the entrance and the rest of the building. We have all the statistics about the, the size of the units, the location of units, the mix of units, as well as the connectivity in terms of, uh, how many of one bedrooms and two bedrooms. We have thirty-nine, two bedrooms and twenty-one, one bedroom. Two, four, sixty. And we also have outline holders for quarters so we can see what sizes they, they are. Uh, the old grocery areas, all the front lawn, we have buildings that's about a hundred and nine thousand square feet. Roof towers is not much out there, one or a thousand square feet. But the four rooms anywhere from, uh, you know, sixteen to eighteen thousand. Uh, we do have critical unit layouts for, uh, for one and two bedrooms. Uh, and, uh, you'll see that the basically the vulnerability that's making the two exit stairwells are the common corridor off of which all the units are. Another drawing that, uh, is of importance is the, uh, outside the elevations of the cross sections to the building. Uh, and that's the, that's the thing where you actually can see, you've got the cross sections, uh, from the back and one, uh, left to right. So that gives you kind of a relationship of, of the units, the corridors, the terraces and to the parking garage, so you see that parking garage. So that's a general quick view, uh, of the architecture there. Uh, we, we discussed the comments from, uh, Michael Cole with, with our client. And, uh, we don't see any issues or big concerns in terms of what we do have to provide and comply. So if, uh, everything that we have here is usable and, uh, if it's something that we can work with and, uh, technical, uh, make sure it would be part of the record in a condition of approval. I'm not sure if you have any particular questions, but I'm, you aren't happy to answer any of it.
Anybody have any questions?
I just want to compliment you on your renderings and, and how the structure would look with the architect community. I think you've done great job.
Well, thank you very much. We took a lot of time and I, I really want to compliment the town for, uh, you know, giving us the, the right cues and the right feedback and, uh, this, this is not just our design, it's, I think it was a nice, nice feedback. And you had to redevelop the.
That was the genesis of the, of the street views. Because what's there now is, again, hopefully going to change. Design something for what's, what's existing in five years. This will, this is hidden from being, that was our intent. What is it going to look like? You know, because the height is a little bit longer. First type of nation, but.
You know, it makes the house, that's, that's the other concern, not just from Main Street, but literally right here, you have, you know, a house.
I'm sure we'll get into more discussion on the height.
Rocco, I'm at the trash container, eleven by twenty-four.
Yeah, let's talk, let's talk about that. So what we decided to, uh, after you, you had, uh, brought that up, is to start talking to, you know, people in the business. So, uh, and we placed a couple of calls and we're, we're simply going to say at this point is that the system is designed to have two compacts. One for trash and one for recycling. It will be picked up as often as the, you know, it kind of, it's kind of finds its own love. So if, uh, if the trash is such that, and, and, you know, they, they've done this and they do this every day in, you know, all over America. They, they work around holidays and special times and you've got to come more often, you just come in often. You'll have a full-time person that is going to keep track of it so that, uh, if, uh, who knows that it needs to be, you know, increased in terms of, you know, it doesn't make any sense not working. And I see, I think those are just the answers. If, uh, if, if the compact area is to be a little bit bigger, you know, we'll have, we'll make the, the adjustments so that they're also happy with how it works. So we've done that and, uh, if, if, if that needs to be one, if conditions are to be true or we make sure the size is right, uh, and the orientation and the arrangement. We have, we had one shoot thinking that we could do one shoot and have, you know, automatically separate, you know, uh, two or three dumpsters. So we decided, you know, let's play safe and just go with two separate ones and make them clearly recycled and, and garbage. And, uh, and there's room to do that, so.
Do you have a question about the leasing office, is that for Sam or can you handle that? There's no leasing office in the building. You guys just said mechanical, how's this going to work?
There is not, because they're not, typically what traditionally happens is that the place is not rented a hundred percent daily. So traditionally, you, one of the, one of the units becomes an office. Uh, if, uh, and, and when, you know, the, the last unit, uh, uh, is, is ready for sale or, uh, for rent in these days. You know, it, it is temporarily the leasing office. Uh, Sam can also make arrangements to have a separate office somewhere. It really makes sense to have the sales and leasing office on, onsite. Uh, we, we think that one of the units will be rented by the person who's going to run the place, so he's also going to be here, you know, twenty-four hours a day. Uh, so we think we can handle the sales aspect that way. Uh, I don't know if you have anything else in mind, but that's how I see it usually translated. And, uh, one of the units and maybe one or two is that in the case that if, if that unit ends up getting rented and we just have to move our, you know, marketing material elsewhere, we could do that. We have a pretty good sized lobby, we have a pretty good sized elevator area. Some of that stuff can be, uh, displays can be used there. And, uh, the actual private, uh, leasing aspect could take place in one of the units or, uh, if, if Sam has to make arrangements to lease a small office nearby to do that temporarily. I don't think it's going to come back.
Okay. Any other questions?
Do you have any testimony?
Not for this witness, um, and just in the interest of time, we do have our traffic expert here, but I think we went over everything and probably his testimony makes more sense before the, before the council. And we need to really kind of firm up that design.
Yeah, I, I don't want to short circuit your testimony, so I'll just check. Anybody have any questions? If not, I'll open it up to the public at this point.
I, I think he still has a plan or not.
Oh, you?
Yes, I would like to finish with Mr. Chadwick, very briefly.
I misunderstood.
No. Thank you, Rocco. There's our veteran reliever coming in here, John Chadwick.
John, you go down the pipe.
John, oh, you already sworn in, John. Um, could you just, uh, give the board some, uh, what, what towns do you represent as a planner?
Uh, Precipine, Round Side, and Franklin, and Southbound with, uh, Warren Township. Put by the underwriters. I, I've represented most of the towns in Morris, Somerset, Middlesex over the years. I've been doing it sometime.
And you, you've been here a number of times.
I have. I've involved a number of different projects. I've been reviewing your planning documents for years, hecky, that's.
And it's a fantastic, I mean, John, it's, it's the best we've ever seen, like, John, and Sispy's.
I tell you, the, the redevelopment plan sits at the bottom, I think. I mean, you, you took it twice and it wasn't necessarily technical justice. I mean, I see this site, uh, one of the corners comes to redevelopment district. Rocco went through, first thing is set in perspective, is it proportionate to what's there and what's not? And I think it is, and I think those renderings showing how the different buildings relate to this proposal. It's not going to be a huge building sticking out of, uh, a Main Street redevelopment. It just isn't because of where, where it sits. Its best perspective, I see is coming into railroad tracks coming up. That's what you see, the pariser in the building, you see in front of the building. If you're on the street, you'll see the streetscape and you had a good, good explanation of the materials. So if you get all gravitations, it fits, it meets with your long-term goals of fit. That this was going to be part of the center of Summer Building, Summer Building for all, real for time. Uh, I think it fits and complements the, uh, county building across the street. It will fit and complement your plans for in front of this building on East Main. The variances, uh, I'll basically see one, see two. There's no way of expanding the site. You're slightly below the standard. It doesn't affect or alter what the general proposal is. The proposal is more as in keeping with what your vision was. The setback solution, I think, was a very good solution. You can step in the building, though, as you come under the railroad tracks, you start to come up the hill, you'll see the building falling back. It will provide the light and air. Uh, it will be complimentary to the other side you anticipated you'd all have on the main. So I think it meets both the C one, you can't stand the property and the C two. I think it's an excellent planning solution for that variance. The parking standards, we discussed the length to the George Bolt and I think we figured out what it is in seventy-five spaces or sixty units. Uh, will there be occasion that there's a need to find an on-street parking space, of course, surely. Like anything else, you know, a party at your house, do a parking at the driveway and the lawn and on the street. And that's life. We, we, we're not planning, it's like the traffic engineer is talking about, plan to be eighty fifth highest peak man. Because if you plan for a hundred percent, you have to just stay home, be a down home and that, that's it. And if you're going to be, uh, you're saving open spaces to a parking lot, you don't need to do that. The other variances and waivers, I think we discussed it, we agreed. Do you really escape the south side between the proposed fence, probably slide the parking lot, build a parking lot. Sidewalk closer to the building itself, few little more space, that'll soften the, uh, edge of this building will be adjoining. The adjoining is in a different zone, so we can't go that way and be in the same zone. It's just creating more varies and more confusion for everything. It's not ill. So it's, it's, it is what it is. But I think the other part of it in context with all of the variances, they're all weighting varies and they all run to what you've been putting in your documents. This is how we want to suffer building to evolve. And it is probably moving in that direction. I know I did work here thirty years ago, if you get anything done, it's very, very difficult. As time passed, uh, the county seat took on, I think, a more comprehensive vision of what it is and what it's going to be. And I think you're on that, on that direction. This is one of those components that leads you to a successful implementation plan. I see nothing in the proposal that is outrageous, not even, you might just even argue deviations are the minimums. Lot size, little setback here. The only one that showed, you didn't figure out, you asked my disagreement was why are the lights so bright? And simple answer, we're right at the driveway. That's why, we're right how to meet the light. So now who says this is not, that's what it is. It's not bad, but that's functional. And that's what all of these are. So, and I conclude, and the real final standard for a planner is, is there a substantial impact on the neighborhood and the zoning plan in general? The answer to the neighborhood is that this is the evolving vision for this area. And it drives what the characters be playing for and has been playing for. In terms of alteration to zoning, you have a lot of standards with its own, we eat the majority of it or they're pre-existing and simply aren't affected one way or the other in terms of, of our vote. So I conclude that this plan certainly needs the standard for manual variance under vote to see one and see the standards.
Any questions?
I, I have a question. So as planning board members, we are given numbers for parking and recommended numbers. And what you're saying is you should follow the recommended spending numbers by professionals for parking requirements.
These, these standards for parking are standards developed for this day and period. Part of the Yaris I S book is at the end. If you think that these standards are not appropriate for the municipality, you should file an amendment to it. A lot of municipalities didn't do that. If you chose not to for whatever reason.
Well, we have a parking problem. There's a reason, we have a parking problem.
Any, any community that I will call a developed, invisible sector has a parking problem. If it doesn't have a parking problem, it is a deterioration. You didn't have a parking problem, there isn't.
Yes, but we're, as planning board members, we are trying to solve some of the problems in, while we are developing. And if we constantly cut that, make that, give these variances, we're just creating a problem and pushing, kicking the can down the road.
I don't think this adds to the problem. With sixty units and seventy-five spaces. There are a lot of multi-family units in town that very, very few are, they contribute future. We are, I don't think we are exacerbating, I don't think we are increasing our tests behind what is the common denominator to a town center that is vibrant. If, if we were talking about ethical parking standing of a half a space to per unit. You have a whole different philosophy there, set of questions. For instance, if you chose to make this area a creative village. Creative village prohibits parking and encourages much higher densities than we have here. So we're the one that did that. Components certainly are there. I mean, think about it, this building, you trip coming out of the front door and you're going to be in creative, it's pretty close. So you could envision a good deal of that population, quartet population using that facility.
Yes, on, works that, and then on weekends using their cars.
I'm in, I'm not in the eight bracket, it lives on Uber or lives on Red Car. But I've got a couple of sons, they don't have little cars. Come weekend, they take their car to go ride wherever they're going, that's it. They don't pay insurance, they don't do any of that stuff. It's amazing how much a car costs. But we're, we're off, we're off the point. The, the, the point is, you hear a standard that says one and a half and we have one forty-two.
One and point six, not one and a half.
Oh, one eighty-two.
What?
One eighty-two, one, one point eight for one bed and two for two beds.
Correct, so is that one and a half?
I mean, it is, it is a, I, I don't like to get into, into regulations and rules. But when you designate an area as a redevelopment area, that can come up to the plan. You could su- truck any other. trump any other standard that is the state's standard because of the, the authority given to the municipality.
I understand that, but we are laymen who are counting on professional standards to set these designs.
And those professional standards, as I told you, were a statewide standard. You know what I know, you can't have a uniform standard for anything in the state of New Jersey.
So, so just to tell us we're getting into this, to kind of question what you said is that we have a parking problem. We couldn't have one thirty years ago, before development. So the developments created this parking problem.
The vitality of downtown community.
Which is, is directly based on development. My concern is that we are creating more of a parking problem. We have to change all of our rules and beg the council not to ticket our own cars coming to this meeting because we can't park on the street that we're now taking spots from for this to come.
See what I said to you, though. In my judgment, the amount of parking that we are designing, as far as this project is adequate. Are we contributing to the problem? No, we're not solving it either.
I think we have used the one point, I understand that, all over town.
Because we knew the train station, that was our, that was our...
Right, well, all over town by the train station.
Right, that was our sort of compromise. But they're not meeting one point two.
They are meeting one point two.
Yes.
Are they meeting a one point two?
Yeah.
Seventy-two.
I've got two spaces for the employees to look in detail, so it's seventy-three by by sixty or sixty.
So the one point two is not the one twenty, the one point two is not one twenty spaces?
No. No, one twenties are RSIS, the organ says, is on the parking spaces. And...
Seventy-two.
And that's including the visitor.
No, yeah.
Well, this is an issue that, uh, I don't think anybody has an answer to, because they can't use the parking deck, they're going to be dealing with cars.
So they're, so they're not, so they're not, it's not the seventy come on, or not meeting, even if we go to one point two, they're not meeting their requirements? This is what I'm trying to...
Forty-five spaces. What we are doing is meeting what has been your standard. We got no difference between you and our proposal and other projects.
Is that true?
Yeah, we used one point two in the last three or four developments.
Yeah.
So, so the Storm's Building, Jack's, um, it's all about one point two, one point three, but it's all, it's all town.
Yeah.
And what, and we just didn't talk about visitors on the other ones, or that wasn't incorporated? Just this whole thing is that we...
Well, you remember the Storm's, they're, they're a parking deck.
Right.
So it's been handled different ways, but it has come up. Like the, the Wise Building, it has a couple spaces, service spaces. You said the same building on the ground?
So they do have it for visitors?
The old Sires lot, there's some spaces there that are supposed to be for visitor parking.
But this project, we're just, they're saying they do have some spaces for visitors, but not all the spaces.
Any other questions?
Um, yeah, as going forward, you know, the road building is going to be separate from the project that's somewhat planned.
Progress, yes.
Yeah. Would there be some sort of future ability to work with that to accommodate additional parking?
They don't have any parking. The, the only, that, they have zero parking.
No, because of...
However, yeah, there, there is, there is a small area, obviously, for loading and unloading and trash, which is essentially going to be envisioned to be off of the, uh, the easement, that's also a requirement.
Yeah, they, they're going to have, my understanding, any of the open, they're going to have loading zone at the back, load the south side of the building. So, maybe, oh...
Yeah.
So that might be used as a loading zone.
Yeah.
As well.
Yep.
You'd have to work it out for it.
I mean, it's not rocket science, but it's messed up right now through all the different pieces. And now all of a sudden, these two properties are going forward. And whatever was done in the thirties is going to happen this year.
Okay, any other questions? If not, I will open it up to public. Questions, any comments? Do you know, public comments? It's a pleasure. Height, I think that, nothing to be put here. First of all, I think the, the parking issue is the same one we faced in other places, and I think the one point two is reasonable. And I, I like the building. I think it would be that, given the quality of materials, uh, how it didn't exactly meet the spirit or the, the letter of the setback, it, it made the spirit. And I, I think it worked. Especially in a look, it's composite, and your, other buildings are all rounded. So if nobody's got any other comments?
You know, I just, for, for my comments, I, I would just like to say, I am still, as everyone, I always bring up the parking every time, it's always a sticking point for me. Um, as, I, I do think we have a very large parking issue in town, so it, it does stick to me as an issue I will continue to bring up, um, and continue to try to get more parking out of developments. I will just feel this is a large building pushing the boundaries up, right up to the borders, um, and it is different than some of our other ones we've approved where there's literally a house now sixteen feet away with other houses, you know, next to that. So I do think a five-story structure that, you know, each variance by itself is small, six hundred feet for the, the lot coverage, ten feet for the rear yard, uh, thirty-five feet for the lot depth, you know, the, the setback, I understand that, you know, it is a little, a little bit to guarantee that this pushes the exact boundaries as big as we can get onto that property. So it does make me a little nervous that every single one of these is to make it as close to those property lines as possible, which is why we need so much more parking, which at the end of the day is always my huge concern, as everybody's sitting here. Not worried, we debated about the, the parking of every single one of these developments for me, kind of like trees for Mr. Cleveland over there.
That's what I'm hearing.
That's, that's it. I hear you guys a lot, because I come for the trees.
I'm surprised.
The laurels.
My job.
The impervious.
Correct.
I am here.
I mean, we, we, we papered over three thousand needed training.
Yeah, I, I want to tag, tag on to Jason's comment. When I looked at the size of the apartments, so our recommendation of eight hundred square feet and a thousand square feet, um, at eight percent number, it was done because we know, because of designs being shifted a little, a little bigger, a little smaller, all of your apartments have gone to a smaller eight percent. So you cram onto this site, it's a beautiful building, it's too big for, I feel, it is, you know, just pushed it to its limits too far for this particular site. Uh, it's not the height of the street that I'm worried about, it's just the absolute mass of the building. I think you've pushed to a point where, um, it doesn't fit the site, it's too big for the site, and thus we have parking problems and the, the variances that we made, and the step-back setbacks aren't quite what they are. And it's a beautiful building, I, it's just on a too small site, either way you look at it, and I'm uncomfortable that we are condoning cramming as much as you can possibly put onto the site. And I've said this for other developments also, um, just because it's there, and obviously you want to make a profit, and you want it to be a nice building, but if you had used our numbers, there would be fewer apartments, and therefore less requirements for some of these other things. So, um, I am just concerned we are setting this trend of just allowing people to fill out these sites a little, where the buildings are just too big for the site.
Is there any way of, like, eliminating some of the apartments that are six feet, and maybe some of the apartments are bigger, so people don't feel so proud?
But, I mean, I, I, I know it's a financial today. I'm, it's a big financial today, I'm sure. But it's just like, it's going to be, like he just said, people are going to be, like, living on top of one another, or you're cramping your own apartment and can't turn around and have your, your private privacy or something with your spouse or significant other. And, and I, I agree with the chairman, the beauty of the, the apartments, beautiful. I like it goes to the one that terraced, it looks absolutely gorgeous and relaxing, you know?
What, what would, to, to bring the apartments up to a hundred percent of what our minimum requirement is, what would that number, what would the number six be reduced to? Fifty-four, fifty-two?
You do, you do what?
To make, to make the one measures eight hundred and the two measures a thousand. Would that be eight percent?
Let me just comment on that. Those standards of one thousand and eight hundred, I don't know if they were, I'm pretty sure they were originally...
We chose them, we chose them as planning board after a lot of thought on what size they'll keep.
In recent times.
In recent times.
Because why?
And they have been adjusted, um, up, they have been adjusted as things change. We've created studio apartments at smaller numbers, so we were very comfortable with these numbers. We did not want to create apartment buildings that are self-standard. There was a standard of living we wanted to maintain in these apartments, and we can do that through carefully.
I can argue with your conclusions, your, your statement, but what I can say to you is, I've been doing a lot of planning work along the Hudson County border for years. And the apartments, those type of facilities are much smaller than your standard, and they are also much more expensive.
Right, but we don't want to be a analog company.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying to you, the space demands for the rental household is a quality of the property, not necessarily the space.
Well, we can differ on how that comes about, but my point is that we as a planning board came up with these numbers, um, for a good reason, and, uh, part of that was to maintain quality of design and space that we wanted as living conditions for Somerville and rental apartments in Somerville. So, um, and, and so my point comes from there. You can argue the numbers all you want. I mean, I lived in Manhattan, I know about tiny apartments, but that doesn't mean, um, what I'm seeing is a trend towards trying to get away with doing as small a possible apartment, as, as many as you can cram onto the site, um, which is what developers want to do, because that's how you make money, but the fact of the matter is, is as planning board members, we're responsible for looking at the picture and watching these trends, and I'm uncomfortable with the trends that we've seen for some of these buildings.
But it implies that it works.
But, no, it doesn't, because these variances, you require experience.
Not, not to the size of the, not, they don't...
Yes, but because you have, no, not to the size of this, but because you have made smaller, you used your square footage in such a way, there have more apartments, which need more, which needs more parking, which needs setback variances. So my, my whole point is, um, we are just trying to put giant buildings on small spaces and just filling in as much as we possibly can and asking for variances. And that's not for you, it's other developers, and I've made this comment before.
I think it's important to recognize, you know, how many years it takes to compile even four properties in a row to, to even envision a, a project like this.
I, I can appreciate all the work that's done, and it's a beautiful building. I'm an architect, I know I've done this. But I, but you, you knew the regulations going in, you knew you would need variances, so this is not a surprise that we're questioning the things now. I mean, coming in with needing variances, so we have the right to question whether we should grant these variances. That's our responsibility to the town.
To, to reduce the parking variance, I, I don't, and I'm not a planner, but to reduce the parking requirement, we somehow have to reduce the number of units. And it's either make the existing units bigger, and fewer of them, or take one floor off completely, get to forty-eight, and I know that's not...
It's not economic.
No.
Because you have, you have a break-even point, which you have to, you know, you have to have, of the sixty, you probably have to have at least fifty-five right at a given time. But the, the, the parking requirement is, is, is difficult to get around. There's, there's going to be folks there who will be, not, not a lot, but I'm sure in our existing apartments, there are a handful of people that still have that set of one hundred apartments. It's, it's just convenient, you know, and I, I'd love to see the work. As Brian said, it's a gorgeous building, a lot of work is done into this, it'll, it'll be the standard for the next one, which is going to be around the corner or here. You know, we don't have the ultimate fate of Morris Street, we, that's, that's just the, that's the next, yeah, that block to the east, and across the street to the west. It's not going to stay the way it is now. Quite as, as Jason and Al said, you know, it's, it's a death by a thousand times, I mean, here it's a death, you know, by a thousand cars, and one or two extra parking needs in five, and we, we, you know, we have lots, we can't, we can't create parking, you know, arrangements and resell the same space five or six times. So I, I, I just, I'd love to see the, but I, I just, it's just a little intense, you know, I'd like to hear from some of the other members who haven't spoken yet, who will be...
Well, I'm just looking at, you know, I'm trying to apply.
Go down fifteen spaces. It's out of the...
How many more spaces?
It's sixty-four square feet, that's an eight by eight room.
Right, yeah, now it's something I need to talk about. I'm...
I'm bushering, I think I have to switch. All right, so, you know, first of all, I, I, just procedurally, we did, uh, increase the, the unit sizes. Originally, they had balconies with more of the terrace, we moved the, the walls out to, to meet that eight percent ratio. If, if parking, though, is the issue, I think we can, you know, we're going one and a half stories below grade, we can push that to a full two stories and probably get twelve or fifteen more spaces. I mean, again, you're talking about what's there now and tens of millions of dollars.
Oh, I, I'm, I'm well aware of...
I mean, so, I mean, especially with the parking deck, underground parking deck. So we can agree to go down two stories, uh, a full two stories, and then maybe get, as I said, an extra twelve spots, and now we're looking at, you know, one point five, and again, you know, we're, we're just, we're taking guidance from the other approved projects of parking ratios, so...
Well, my, my point is just not about parking, it's also the setback that you need a variant for, we're, you know, you're asking, you don't have to send it back so far, so, again, it's the building out and massing of these sites that I'm, I have a concern about. Parking is a sort of a...
That's mine.
It's Jason's thing.
That's my baby.
They're all connected, they're all connected, but, uh, yeah, that was just my comment.
The apartment scale is often, to get you to almost a lot to... Other variances are going to be susceptible to anybody unless they have a sufficient...
Or they live next door to the building?
No, no.
Now, setbacks on the side where that house is, if they were setting back the proper distances, would be a different effect.
But we can't solve that because there is a different tone. Who's, who's old country for this overlay district is that RSIS department?
Yes, yes. So I understand that you can't solve it by buying that property, but that's why we put that setback in there to protect that property and the people who live there to have it, have... So I'm not saying, I'm not granting variances, I'm just saying it's not one thing, it's the fact that all these things we may ask for in order to, and, and that is the concern is all those little things that you're pushing the envelope and, um...
Even with the history of how we shrunk this building to get here.
But that's not on me to, like...
I know that.
Yeah, that's not on me that you looked at what the requirements of the zoning was and decided to try to push the envelope. That's not on me.
We look at it, if it is too much, that's all.
We could go higher and make it a smaller footprint. That wasn't desirable.
Then we would still have to grant you variants, and maybe we're not.
Maybe not. If we, if we could build this, this a box, straight up six stories to ninety feet, we would be able to comply with the setback.
Yes, but that's why we put the zoning in there as to, I, this is, this is the constant argument. We put the zoning in there because we feel, as a planning board and an entity, that that is the healthy way for a building to go into that site. What the developer decides is a healthy thing to go into that site is not really our concern. We have already set our standard saying we want to protect those houses, the people who live in those houses, from having a hulking building next door, right? Sixteen feet away. So we, we design those setbacks. We don't want to add more to the parking problem, so we set the parking standards. So our job is to not help the developer figure out what to do and how to push the envelope. Our job is to sort of protect the town and the standards we want to maintain for the town. And that's how we set the zoning. So when you come in for a variant, this should, not just because it's a pretty building and you want to have it there, that's not the reason for it. And we want to work with you, it's not like we want to just say no. But there's creep here that's starting, that some of us are recognizing and it's making us uncomfortable that the size of this building on this site isn't appropriate. I don't wish to be careful about that.
Okay, I think we're comfortable, a lot of this started to, probably important.
Bernie, if you want, I have some conditions, so write down if you're, that's a big motion or however you want to.
I'd like to have the motion approved. And I think we'll take you up on the offer for more parking. What?
More parking, Sam?
How much more?
I said we can get twelve more, it was a discussion.
Each room has about thirty spaces. So we already have added seven spaces, so we can add another probably, how many, not quite, do you have, how many? Fifty, probably, yeah, but you know.
So we commit to twelve, that additional space. Eighty-seven.
But before, before we adjourn eighty-six, the issue is. One point four five. Well, we need to go.
We need to wash them first.
One where the, how to get it out on the table, I'll move, with the.
Reprostructing part.
I'll move it just so we might have a discussion or something a second please.
If this, with all the other stuff, you're moving with that and all the additional?
Right.
That's.
Yeah, I think the point is let's get a motion, and if the motion is to approve, then I can lay out what conditions I think need discussed and then that can be incorporated into the motion to approve, the motion to deny, then there really no need to go through any conditions.
So what is your motion?
My motion is to, is to, to approve project with the condition, with, with the stipulations that the professionals on their side have agreed to, including the addition, the expansion of the underground parking to two full stories, one full story below plus one at grade.
Correct.
Or is it now?
No, it's going to be two stories below.
So for, for a total, a minimum total of eighty-seven, please. Okay.
Second?
I'll second, we'll get it on the table.
Now, now we can do it. Now.
All right, so the conditions that I've seen as we've discussed this, which then would require an amended motion to appropriate these conditions as well, would be compliance of any and all current future recommendations of the fire department, including the NSPA thirteen system. All conditions of A three, which is Mike's report, will be complied with but for I M G three on page thirteen. That's the one that had to do with the trash compactor room. And the reason for that is the applicant gave testimony, um, that the applicant will utilize private garbage and recycling. That would also be a condition. The garbage will remain inside until pickup and sufficient pickups would be scheduled as necessary. Someone will monitor that daily and they will increase the size of that trash compactor room if need be based upon the amount of garbage that's ultimately generated. The applicant will request the creation of space along Southford Street for use as a loading area for the council. The applicant shall comply with, there was testimony about the illumination and Mike made comment that it is dimmable. So I think you should include a condition, the applicant shall comply with illumination dimming recommendations of the borough if that's necessary. Yeah, it says that it can be dimmable, but if you, my, my brothers, if you come out and say it should be dimmed by three foot candle, whatever it is, point five foot candles, that's, that's what should be complied with, whatever your recommendation is. Street tree money, four street trees. The plan will be amended, uh, again, to the borough's satisfaction, to move the sidewalk area on the south side of the property closer to the building and install some additional ornamental shade trees along that side. The applicant will get council approval to move the dish, to move the utility poles as may be necessary. This is with regard to the rooftop use, um, I know the board had some concerns. I think placing a number on that would be difficult, a number of patrons up there, anything like that, they have to comply, I guess, if I have a fire code of requirements, that would be. But I would just say no commercial, no commercially advertised or rental events on the roof, only private events of the tenants. And they would obviously, again, have to comply with whatever, uh, fire quoted noise requirements would be applicable to that area. And then, and then the plan to go down two stories for parking and not the one and a half as currently shown, and add at least an additional twelve spaces.
Now we, now, all right, so I'll amend my motion to include, to include conditions as specified by the attorney.
Second? I guess I'll second that.
Now, now we can discuss. So how you want to do, or you want to just go around the table or have, have our usual free pool? So that's on you.
I, I think we're pretty much discussing that. Yeah, it's just the figure.
Right. It's time to vote for it. Unless there's any other board member that wants to come in.
Bernie Martin?
Yes.
Peter Rosen?
No.
Ken Callen?
Yes.
Jane Kabuda?
Yes.
Andrea Dyer?
No.
Jason Craskett?
No.
Al Karesi?
No.
Larry Cleveland?
No.
Krista Raddick?
Yes.
Four yeses. Four yeses. Five no's.
Yeah, four yeses, five no's.
Thank you. I will open up the public, opening up the public, turning off public comment. This is a private session, and I will enter some more. I will clear. Oh, I forgot. Next, friends.